We don't need to go over that again. What we have done, very simple. We have two categories, residential and non-residential. We've given them a three to one ratio per the Florida Administrative Code. It reduces their impact fees quite a bit.
Well, three times, let's see, three times, three hundred forty-six thousand, nine hundred, about a million dollars.
About what?
About a million dollars. Excuse me, two times, so it'd be seven hundred fifty thousand.
Kim?
I think it's a commercial project. I mean, I don't know why we want to change that. I mean, as Jerry said, I mean, she really did do an excellent job explaining it. I don't want to open that Pandora's Box. I mean, this is a commercial endeavor. It is, in everything, it is commercial. And I don't know why we're trying to change it to fit into something residential. It's not residential.
Nancy?
I completely agree. I've thought about this, and I, what if we had a residential hotel that people could stay in for months on end? And they do. It would be no different, except that this one is RVs. And I'm not willing to open, I don't think we are, we want to open, as Jerry put it, the Pandora's Box and allow our impact fees to be, have a complete list of, because once we start it, we have to be fair and equitable for everyone. So I, I think to leave it as it is, this is a commercial endeavor, and that's...
Jerry?
When we discussed this the last time, I was looking for a word that we could use that would be the test, and I tried to bring up mail, and I realized that that wasn't enough. But there's one word that comes up twice or several times in this, and that's the word transient. And hotels are transient. Hotels, I think this really needs to be treated the same way. I can, I can check into a residence inn and actually have, in my career, and stayed three or four months because of a job to do, and that was a residence inn, and it was a transient thing. It wasn't a permanent, and there I could even receive mail, actually. So I think the key word here, the test that I was looking for when we discussed this last time, is the word transient. So I'm inclined to let it lay as a commercial property.
Any other comments?
That was my impression as well. Let me simply ask, because the word "commercial" does not appear in our ordinance, the dichotomy is either residential or non-residential. So if you, whatever you do, if you would use that terminology with respect to your decision. Make it a lot easier.
I would make a motion that we approve this as non-residential.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve it as non-residential. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have unfinished business, which is discussion regarding amendments to mobile vending regulations. This is one of those topics, like that, should going in the thatch category.
It doesn't work to go away. For the record, Teri to Urban Design, when we amended the mobile vending ordinance to remove the requirement for a special exception application, it was pointed out by the Planning Commission that other changes needed to be made, that they felt that some of the requirements of any application would still be too onerous for that. And we've gone back and forth, I've checked various municipalities and did kind of a comparison chart at the end of your agenda packet. The comments I received were somewhat all over the board, didn't get really definitive direction, which is why it's back as a discussion item. When you go through the actual ordinance for the mobile food dispensing vehicles, we start with the definitions, which are all pretty straightforward. When we get into the requirement sections, first requirement is proof of the valid license from the state of Florida, you know, that they can operate, that they've gone through the health department and things that are required. Staff would be inclined to think that we should have that submitted as a part of an application. The second part is a site plan. This became somewhat controversial. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet with Patty Allen and the fire marshal to look at possible mobile vending. And something that I was not aware of is that for any of the mobile vendors that cook, they have propane. Propane has a separation requirement from any point of ignition or opening. So a site plan would actually be a very certain public safety issue that would need to be a technical review by staff to ensure that we aren't creating a public safety issue. The notarized affidavit from the property owner. There was objection to requiring that to be notarized. Without the notarizing, we don't know who signed it. We don't know where it came from. The affidavit basically puts the owner on notice that they are going to allow the mobile vendor, its employees and customers to access to the bathroom facilities, and that they will also, you know, if they have trash, it will be up to the property owner, business owner, to allow them to dispose of it there. The property owner is responsible for ensuring the area is maintained in a neat and clean manner, that the location is not an assigned spot for loading, unloading of vehicles, and that the property owner notify us if they have revoked their approval, and acknowledgement by the property owner that they will only allow licensed mobile vendors on their site. So that affidavit that we are asking for being notarized actually does put the property owner on notice that they are going to be held responsible for these things. Without that, we, the city doesn't have a way to ensure that that owner has been made aware of all of those items.
And we were gonna create a form, correct?
Yes.
Not that they have to keep recreating this letter. It would be a form, and they could even get it notarized at the city clerk's office. So, okay.
Yes. The make, model, year of each mobile food dispensing vehicle, that, that is kind of a standard. Some of the municipalities ask for menus that might, and the purpose for that is possibly to determine if they will be cooking and whether there's an issue with propane or not. Also, the, something that ours does not contain, which probably should, is disposable of any gray water or used grease. There are services that you, that can either be done through your commissary or have a service do, do a pump out for you, because we do not want to create a situation where any of that's being dumped improperly.
Do they have to provide that to the state on their application for their license?
I'm not positive on that. It was a discussion that we did have yesterday, you know, whether the state would require it, depending on the type of license, you know, what type of foods they're cooking.
Right. Because I know there's different categories.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I, I mean, I think those two questions, those three questions are very important. Menus, not so much, but are you using propane? Where are you dumping your stuff?
Could that be part of the site plan? When you do...
If it were part of an overall application, just to make sure we had that information to ensure that the mobile vendor was aware that they can't just dump, you know, wherever they want to.
Yeah, because I think there was some discussion before of whether or not certain categories need a commissary, but I would think that those are the same questions that the state is asking, so it would be an easy answer for them if they've already had to go through the process.
Yeah, we just, I would like the city to be aware of what is set up for them. Transfer or change of owner of the business property. You know, if one owner gave a vendor authority to be on there, if they sell the property, the new owner would need to also authorize them to be on their, their property. Under the Food Dispensing Vehicle Operating Standards, there was a list, and some of it is a little bit repetitive from the prior session, section, because we, again, we go back to the state-issued license requirement that is listed there. We say that the local business tax receipt be displayed, prominently displayed, that they should only dispense at a location where they've been approved. I mean, it's just pretty straightforward and basic, that they are, to keep them in a clean and sanitary condition. It's, that's pretty straightforward. The, no vehicles shall operate on any premises where the owners revoke prior authorization to the mobile vendor. Actually, the odds of them doing that are probably low, because the owner's not going to let them do that. That may be a little redundant and not necessary. One that has been questioned is the use of sound equipment bells or other devices that produce sound which is audible outside of a mobile home dispensing vehicle shall be prohibited. That is prohibited in general in Chapter 14 of the city code. To allow it for mobile vending would be an exception to what is cited in Chapter 14 of the city's code ordinances. We do not allow mobile vending vehicles on the public right-of-way unless there was express permission, i.e. special exception, special event, special event type of thing going on. You know, in those instances, yeah, they're part of a group, they may be on the, may have been approved on a public right-of-way. But otherwise, our ordinance would not allow somebody to just pull up to a curb and sit up on a street corner to operate. And some of our verge may be redundant, because then we go back and say that they have to operate within the requirements of the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. Well, that's pretty much a done deal. We define when they are not actively conducting business for them to remove the vehicle from the site. The one area that would absolutely need to be amended is the signage. When this was drafted, we just kind of copied what was allowed for the vending carts in the, in the parks. That predates the mobile vending trucks that are entirely wrapped in signage, and really as the vehicle's assigned. So maybe signage other than what is already on the vehicle would be limited to one portable A-frame sign.
That would be fine.
Within so many feet of, of the site. One question was the use of any temporary tents, canopies or other shade structures in conjunction with it. The code currently wouldn't allow them to put up temporary shade structures, additional chairs, tables or anything else. The concept of a mobile food vending business is that you get walk-up customers and they take the food and go. It's kind of a takeout. It's not a sit-down restaurant.
You're not talking about like, maybe perhaps a shade structure over the opening of the mobile vending?
And most of them, a lot of them have, you know, when it, when they open it, it just creates automatic shade, but that's part of the vehicle.
Yeah, I would say detached. You're talking about anything that's detached from the vehicle. They can't just put up a ten by ten on either side of their...
Right, and I see it differently. I see it as, if they want to put up a canopy as a part of the ambiance and somebody's gonna walk up, buy something, and just want to sit there and eat it, I just don't see a problem with that. It would be the same, I just don't see that as an issue.
The code in and of itself, in Chapter 26, does not allow the use of temporary structures of any form unless it's part of an event. So if you did it on a regular basis, say, a mobile vendor had a regular agreement with a business that they sat up there every day, and they went out there every day and put up a couple of ten by tens, then that's going to fly in the face of everything else in the code where we do not allow any temporary canopies or tents.
I agree with you. Yeah, I don't...
I think we need to keep it simple.
Yep. We do not allow them to sell alcoholic beverages. That's pretty much regulated by the state. In order for somebody to do that, they would need a catering license for their alcoholic beverage. That's usually very specific. There's a couple of them in town that do have that catering license, that they can, their license, their alcoholic beverage license travels with them wherever they set up. And we say it's unlawful to operate unless you're in compliance with this section. And that's pretty much what ours says. From staff's perspective, we actually, we would like to change the signage portion and clarify on the site plan, we need to ask about the propane, and we need to ask how they would be disposing of the gray water or grease.
So in the situation that you spoke about, were you able to find an area where this would work?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I guess that's the, the balance that we're trying to achieve here, which I don't, you know, everybody's all over the board with their different parameters for their food trucks, but this is kind of a new, you know, we're trying to get this started again, because there was pushback, and now everybody's okay with it, so now we're back on track. And I, I mean, I would like to see us keep the, until we know that we're really restricting somebody with these parameters, I think most of it makes a lot of sense, because we want to know who's out there, who's conducting business, how they're conducting business, and that they're not creating any kind of safety. And we, we, you know, we definitely want them on developed property, which I think is the best solution. Kim?
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I don't think that the rules are too stringent, and I think they're important, because then we don't have to worry about it. I mean, because if you don't make it that way, people are gonna start, there's gonna be problems, and people are gonna come back, and we're gonna have owners going, I didn't give them permission to be here, or I told them to go, or there's not a site plan, oh, that's not working, their parking, you know, everybody knows. If there's a site plan, everybody knows. And if I'm in business and I'm really planning on making a go of this, I want all those details anyway.
I mean, the only one thing, too, that I know, the gentleman that was here with the, the icy truck, who's fabulous, I mean, he does have music that he plays, kind of like an ice cream truck type of thing, it's part of the whole motif. So I don't know how we could allow for that if it's not something that's totally unreasonable.
But if you open the door for that, you're...
You're opening the door for all kinds of music, yeah.
I mean, during a, during a special event, it's...
Then it's okay.
But if I told him he could be in my parking lot, and that music just kept going on and on and on all day, I mean, that'd get annoying. I mean, it's kind of nice, just for a couple hours.
So with a special event, that, like, at the Cooper Street, that would have been okay for him to be playing his music at the party?
Yeah, as part of a special event, yeah. There are exceptions to a lot of the...
Right.
You want to take more comments before you interject, or...
Oh, no, it's sort of seriously counsel's thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, when I looked at the, the chart you created of comparison to other communities, we really are pretty, you know, lenient compared to other communities. And I think you did involve, so the Bull and Tarpon, didn't they work with you? Didn't the Bull and Tarpon owner work with you and...
Yeah, we did, we invited them to the discussions, you know, as to, and their, the, from their standpoint, the biggest hurdle was that $750 application fee. That was the big hurdle. It, you know, wasn't so much the other things that anybody, you know, from the mobile vending community was, was concerned with, it was that application fee, which brings us back to the point that the council will need to set whatever the application fee is going to be, because we will have to bring that back by resolution to establish a fee. Given the, our current fees, staff, staff's recommendation would be a one-time, $250 application fee. If there's multiple sites, perhaps a small addendum of $25 or $50 for each additional site, to ensure that we've reviewed that location, to make sure that the public safety issues are met, because we would already have their licensing and all of the other things.
If, if they're a standalone business with just a food truck, this may be a Karen Smith question, what, what will their local business tax be? What would they be classified under? Do we know? Like, what, what are they gonna be paying? If they're coming into the city brand-new, they're a new business, they want to start a food truck, what will they be charged for LBT?
Because I believe we would charge them as a non-licensed profession, so that's $63. If they had additional locations, we would charge them for those as well, so...
A lesser amount for each location?
It would be half, 50% for each additional location, so $31.50.
So I think we need to take that into account as well.
So you're talking about $250 in addition?
To the LBT.
Okay.
Unless they, unless they, like, the, the cupcake people had, you know, if they already have an LBT, they would just have to pay the half for the other, for the mobile portion? Karen, in that case, like, if they had a, a brick and mortar store and then they had a mobile unit, would they have to pay for a whole other...
If everything about the mobile vending was the same as the business, then we could treat it as a second location, I would think.
How, how muddled would this be? If, if the, is there any way that we could have the application fee include the local business tax receipt as a mobile vending? Or would that complicate the LBT process?
It would be a common link of funds as well, so...
And the LBT is annual. The actual application is a one-time, just one initial fee. From staff's perspective, we don't think we would need to charge them annually. I mean, they do have their local business tax.
They would have to maintain that, okay. And then that, that way, we would be insured that they still have their state licensing and all of that intact. And that's the purpose of that. I just think we probably need to lower, the $250 may still be high. Okay, considering they're gonna be...
I don't think the $250 is a huge amount. I just...
I don't think the $250 is...
I think that's fine.
Does it sound too much? I don't know what they would say.
It's a one-time thing, it's not...
Yeah, it is a one-time thing.
I think it's, I think that's fine. It's, you know, if we, $125, if somebody's not gonna open up the business because of it, I think it's, that would be fine.
Okay.
And I'll bring that portion of it back with the minor amendments that we discussed.
Thank you.
Two, two points I wanted to make, one of which has already been sort of addressed. When we first prepared the original ordinance and the research we did at that time, you'd be amazed how detailed many of the ordinances are with regulations, and trust me when I tell you, ours is as simple as we felt we could make it. And the second point addresses Teri's comments regarding redundancy. The one side of requirements as it relates to what needs to go into an application is sort of an administrative side of the ordinance, but in order to enforce violations, they need to be set out separately so that if something isn't done, we can address it as a requirement in the ordinance. So there is some redundancy there, but it's necessary for enforcement purposes.
Okay. One other question. With the, with what we have intact now, with the issue, the situation at the Celtic Ray, would we have been able to, would they have been able to work with inside this with what they wanted to do?
With what we're proposing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Clearly was not as bad as thatch.
No.
We haven't brought it back to you.
It's the T-word, don't, don't bring it up.
We haven't brought it a new sign.
Don't mention it.
Wait till you get it again.
Thatch is the new sign.
Maybe we could have, maybe we could have somebody go into a mobile vending where they use thatch, thatch salads or something like that. Hey, people eat weeds, they may, they may like to try that. Okay, next we have new business review of proposed sidewalk closures and detours. This is a non-controversial topic, I'm sure. We're gonna be fielding a lot of calls.
For the record, Mitchell Austin in Urban Design, and I have, I bring good news and bad news. Which would you like first?
Bad.
Okay. The bad news is, because of some upcoming construction projects, we're going to make, need to make some significant closures to the existing Harbor Walk in four different locations, as listed on the, on the slide. We have Gilcrest Park, Harbor Walk West, Gilcrest Park restroom and playground facility. Those are co-located along with Harbor Walk West at US 41 Southbound Underpass, that's Cross Street. All those three projects occur in or about Gilcrest Park. The fourth project, Harbor Walk East, behind the Justice Center, that is a small boardwalk widening improvement. So those four projects are kicking off. The first one in September, and the other three hopefully all go in October. So beginning at that time, we will need to make closures to the Harbor Walk. The map that you see here...
Yes. Better, thank you.
Sorry. Our proposed detour plans, the, sorry, the areas that you see in blue, red, yellow, and another blue over here, are the areas of closure. The detour routes are denoted by these orange lines, and you can see they are quite significant. So I can walk through those one by one. So for Gilcrest Park, this is Area 1, the playground and the underpass. The detour will be from essentially McGregor Street down to Marion Avenue, and then up Marion Avenue to Taylor Street. The length of that closure is due to the, the construction locations, there won't be access beyond the event center, and this is the closest point where we can get to traffic signals so that we can cross safely on US 41 Southbound. The area of longest construction will of course be Area 1. After we get the other two projects underway, there will be some minor changes to that detour, but by and large, if you're trying to walk from the hospital to Fisherman's Village, you're gonna need to follow that route for the duration of, of the Area 1 construction. These routes are designed to be ADA accessible, which is another key consideration, and they're, they're designed to be maintenance of traffic for the, the closure of the facility. So they will meet our state and federal requirements for that construction project, Area 1.
And when you say sign location, these type, this traffic here is gonna be on this signage that you're proposing?
Yes, we will have informational signage like this out, which will show the overall detour, and then we will also have detour roadway signage that will say, you know, sidewalk this way, detour. In addition, one complicating factor is if you're tra, if you're a pedestrian traveling north or southbound on US 41 Cross Street, there's an access staircase that leads you down to Harbor Walk. That's not an ADA accessible route, but it is an existing facility. We will need to have some signage there, and we will also need to have informational signage on US 41 notifying those pedestrians that they can't access Harbor Walk at that point. So they'll be directed to the detour that will be on Marion Avenue.
Mitch, I have a question. What you have outlined in orange on the screen we're looking at right now, when is the start and when is the completion? This is, this orange route is one continuous time period. When does it start and when does it end?
The starting point will be when construction commences. We're hoping that that is in October. It may slide to November, depending on the, the timing of the contractor. That contract hasn't been awarded yet. The end point we're projecting will be December of '17. Depending, again, on the contractor and their timing, we may have to request an extension of that grant project, grant-funded project, so, you know, we'll, we'll know before December of '17 if we need to request that extension, and how far out it will need to go based on the, the project status at that time. But until December of '17, this is, this is the route, the safest ADA-accessible compliant detour route for Harbor Walk.
I'm sure people will find ways to get around it, but this is the official.
Correct.
Yep.
This is what we will be telling people, the, the direction that they need to take. Again, this keeps us in compliance for ADA accessibility and all the federal and state requirements for this construction project. requirements for this construction project.
This meets grant requirements.
Correct.
Federal requirement.
Mitch, I have a, are we proposing that the bicycles and walkers, both directions, share their sidewalk on Marion Avenue?
Correct. That is the facility that we have available.
Bicycle riders will most likely go stay in Marion.
Only in one way, though, because Marion's a one-way street. Depends on which way you're going in the detour.
That's correct. And if you're going the other way on Marion, you'll go on the sidewalk.
And why couldn't the bicyclists still use the roadway on Reta?
Reta is not a signalized intersection, so they would do so at their own risk if they're riding in the roadway. They can certainly do that, but as far as the detour, we are not directing them towards that route.
It's not the official route.
Okay.
Will bicycle riders use it? You betcha.
If you wanted to temporarily try to close one of the lanes on Reta to see how that works for this process, just a suggestion.
Well, actually, where I was thinking about it is, we've talked in terms, and we're doing this, I think, as on Coronado with the charos, that maybe we could have a charo going down Reta one way and Marion the other way for the bicycle. Because Marion is a four-lane road, and if you took the right lane and made it a charo, and then you made Reta, which is typically not as quite as busy, I don't know.
I will tell you, in the wintertime, that is totally untrue. That road is pandemonium in the winter. And because of the walkers and the bicyclists and that type of thing, so...
I think I remember that coming.
I'm just saying, it's, in the, in the season, it's, but, I mean, I think that would be an alternate for the season, to just close one of those lanes and have it go east.
Again, we want the official route to meet grant requirements. Unofficial routes are different.
Right.
But as long as the official route meets our grant requirements, that's the key.
Correct. And keeps us in ADA compliance.
Yes.
So we're not going to write bicyclists' tickets if they don't take the exact detour route?
No, but they should still, if they're on the road, go with the traffic.
Right.
Every day, when I, well, whenever I go to Port Charlotte, every time I go to Port Charlotte, there's always somebody riding their bike, and I know the sheriff's office tickets them heavy for that, so we have to make sure that people understand, if they're in the road, they need to be riding with the flow of traffic.
Correct.
Very basic.
Okay.
What's the good news? That the projects are getting started?
The good news is that we're doing them all at once. Our, it's very closely knit together. We'll be able to have our staff there inspecting the work closely knit together, and some projects will be getting done earlier than others. And the good news is that we have them all funded based on our projections. We don't have the bids back yet, and it's all going to be done, and life will be greater.
One painful year.
Yes.
This isn't, this isn't so bad.
It really isn't. And I have to tell you, for those of us who live on Reta, it'll be a quiet year, because even with the construction, they're usually more considerate than the actual crowds. I don't know what the Pokemon people are going to do, but I'm worried about them.
And don't forget the pickleball.
Right, well, they, now they can listen to the generators and stuff, so that'll drown out the pickleball.
Yes, Pokemon Go players will be frustrated by their inability to get to the site, but construction site safety will be paramount. This final slide here that I wanted to show you is the boardwalk widening. This detour route is from Harbor Walk East, taking you down Marion into Nesbit and up into the park. That secondary detour route in the park, that's to get people from this point safely back down to the detour route. This portion of the Harbor Walk will be open to local traffic, so the people using the condos will be able to access the Harbor Walk, but there's no accessible route from this existing Harbor Walk sidewalk up onto Red Esplanade or to the connecting sidewalk network in the city, so it's, it's not the designated detour route.
Mitch, I know you conveyed this to the MPO folks with regarding the Justice Center at the meeting. Is there any issues with the people in the Justice Center that you are aware of?
Oh, as far as the, the construction work that we're doing?
As far as the detour or anything?
Not, not that we're aware.
I'm excited. It's started.
Yeah, this isn't so bad. I mean, now that we have the connection behind the crab house, it's, it's really not bad.
It's going to be awesome.
Oh, one other thing that I did need to note is that as far as automotive traffic on Red Esplanade, there are improvements slated for Red Esplanade, so at points during the construction project, Reta Esplanade during the, in the construction limits will need to be limited to local traffic to facilitate the construction of crosswalks and special intersection treatments, as well as possibly the, the parking on street. So that, we haven't gotten into that level of detail because we don't have a contractor yet, but when we get that, we will have a better indication of how they want to proceed with those, but we anticipate traffic closures.
I think you had one last slide. I think you only went to number five of six.
Uh, yeah, that's, again, basically the same slide showing the, the underpass area.
Okay, okay. So are we going to put out press releases and things of that nature that we normally do to get it?
There will be press releases. These physical maps will be on signs and, and out, posted out in the, the physical environment before we do the actual detouring, and then the detour will be set, and those informational signs will remain out for the duration of the detour.
Thank you. Kim?
Could, could we maybe do a little paper map or something that, like, for Fisherman's Village or the bicy, where they have the bicycles to be able to hand out so people know? Because you're really tourist.
Yes. Certainly, we can do that with the, with the principal's map showing all the detours.
Right.
We can probably do that fairly efficiently and provide those to the locations of the loan or bike program via Team Punagorda.
Yeah. Tom?
Mitch, could you just go over funding for each of these projects individually? The, the playground is coming from sales tax, is that correct?
Correct. I can't speak 100% to funding. Probably need some support from Howard here, but I believe...
The Area 1 is coming from federal, state grant monies through the MPO and the LAP program, and all the other projects are coming from 1% local option sales tax.
Nice.
And some donations for the playground.
Yes.
Some donations, but the rest is coming from our local option sales tax.
And all of the funds for all of the projects are currently available?
Well, we don't know on the bids, but, but based on our projections, yes. But we don't have any concrete bids yet.
Okay.
What's our donation for the park so far?
My last contact with the, with the Friends of the Gilcrest Park Playground was that they were rapidly approaching their goal. I believe they're still short on collections, but their goal was $100,000, which is a phenomenal amount of money to raise in a community this small in just a couple of months. So they've done a fantastic job regardless of where they end up, but if anybody wants to make donations to them, you can find them via Team Punagorda, and please give as much as you can.
They've done a great job. They really have done a great job.
Wonderful.
Mitchell, is there any way to get, when we do get closer to the playground, to get a rendering, you know, some kind of rendering?
That is part of the, of the design-build process, as we will be providing a conceptual design and a brief presentation on that.
That'll give people something to look forward to while they're frustrated not being able to get through the park.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I think, you know, this is really going to be good. We've done so much work there that people don't really realize. I mean, this is, you know, the downtown flooding, that went on for a year, really, and that was all closed and noisy and all that kind of stuff, but because it wasn't, and that was there and everything was closed, there was really no light at the end of that tunnel. I mean, there was for those of us who lived there because the flooding was better, but it wasn't like there was a brand-new Harbor Walk and park and all this great stuff coming. So now, it's really not going to be that bad. It's going to be awesome. And finally, the, and, you know, that beautiful piece will be done. It'll be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it will. It will.
Oh, the, the end product's going to be great.
Yeah.
We will, we will have to take some pains during the construction.
We will. We'll get lots of feedback from people.
Yes.
As we will.
For sure. That just shows how many people are using it.
Yes.
And that's why. They care, right?
Yeah. Okay, recommendations from city officers. Howard?
We're on schedule, so that the next council meeting will have Hans Park redesign contract on the agenda. We may or may not have the West Henry Development on the next agenda. Depends on what we hear back from the proposal. That may have to push back later. And then at 5:01 PM on September 7th, remember, we have our first budget public hearing, so we can get that in a minute. That's all.
Okay. City attorney?
Nothing further, thank you.
City clerk?
Yes, under boards and committees, under vacancies, we have one unexpired term on the Punagorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee, and a continuing vacancies for one unexpired term on the Utility Advisory Board. Under nominations, we actually have three items. The items that were listed under appointments really should have been included under nominations. Hope that doesn't cause any confusion, but we're not making appoint, any appointments today.
Today, okay.
Okay, so, the first one, we have a three-year term on the Code Enforcement Board and two applicants eligible for nomination. Then we also have a three-year term on the Board of Zoning Appeals. In this case, we do only have one eligible applicant, so if you would like to make a motion to nominate and appoint, you may do so.
Nominate and appoint. Second?
So we have a motion second to nominate and appoint Mr. Lenagower to BZA. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Cared unanimously.
Thank you. And then finally, we have an unexpired term on the Planning Commission and two eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Policy and legislation, I don't have anything. Councilmember comments? Let's start with Kim.
Nothing, thank you. Welcome back, Karen. Good to see you. Good to be here.
Nothing, yeah?
Karen?
I said enough last week.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Have a great weekend.
All right. Yes. Citizens, comments, any topic, please come to this podium here, state your name, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, Steve Fabian. Listening to Mitch about the closing of park brought a question to my mind. Halloween. I hope somebody's looking at that thing, because you know that park is really loaded during Halloween night and the traffic around that whole thing, so think about it.
Thank you.
I'm not sure we want to think about it. We're in trouble.
Please make your way to the podium. Citizens, comments, any topic, make your way to the podium. State your name, you will have three minutes.
Good morning, Patty Allen, General Manager, Fisherman's Village. Howard, I'd like to tell you a little bit about your staff that works for you. As you all know, we just completed our major project in Center Court in Scotty's rebuild. Not one time during the whole process, and then there were struggles, did any of your staff give us a hard time on anything? I want to call out Randy Cole, Smitty, Terry, Jen Molnar. Everybody on your staff has done an incredible job. When we were faced with problems, they found solutions for us. And I, hopefully I didn't miss, I'm sure I missed people, but everyone has been just incredible during this process. And even yesterday, talking to Terry and bringing Jen over, it's never a problem for them to come over and help. It never is a problem. And that goes to your leadership, all of our leadership, and the wonderful place that we live in. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you very much for having great staff, because it, it makes my job a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Make your way to the podium. State your name.
Karen Turnbull, Punagorda Isles. Thank you for your time and patience. As we know, the Punagorda Isles City seawall maintenance fee is $18.50 per foot for people with a 30-foot seawall, and $2.75 per foot for properties with 200 feet of seawall. Quite a large discrepancy. This past weekend, an online conversation took place among Burnt Store and PGI property owners, and I'd just like to share a few of the comments that were posted. Quote, "I have a lot, house on two lots, 76 feet total of seawall, and I pay a double assessment. It takes more city funds to repair and maintain 200 feet of seawall than 30 feet of seawall. Smaller lots are subsidizing larger lots. My view is that the long waterfront owners have more clout. We view seawall maintenance like roads, curbs, schools, et cetera. Houses are taxed by their value, size, and lot size. Why not waterfront? The seawall fee system has been a concern for 40 years, as we all know. Every year, citizens bring forward this concern, and city officials expend time and resources fielding this concern. Each time the seawall fee is increased, the discrepancy among lot size and fee grows, becoming more obvious to citizens. It is disturbing that the fee system favors those with larger seawall frontage at the expense of those with smaller seawall frontage in terms of fee per foot of seawall. This is a black cloud over paradise. This concern will continue to be an issue on a yearly basis until the fee system is corrected. A move to a more equitable fee system would benefit current and future property owners and the city. Council action on this issue would enhance the community's perception of city government by demonstrating an interest in equity among property owners as well as responsiveness to their concerns. In the best interest of current and future Burnt Store and PGI property owners and the city, please consider moving the seawall fee to an ad valorem tax or to another more equitable assessment system." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call for citizens, comments, any topic. Make your way to the podium. Seeing none, we are adjourned.